Good evening. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council Meeting of September 12th, 2022 to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Present.
Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Walters from this evening's meeting.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. McDougall. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we're on to item three announcements and committee reports. I have kind of a long announcement that I'll start off with. Just to update council and the public on the Tommy Thompson trestle fire. Just the investigation is ongoing. Based on preliminary data, the fire is almost certainly human caused. Based on the significant amount of evidence obtained so far, including working with federal investigators. We know the fire was started about 1:40 Tuesday morning of August 30th. So if you happen to be up late or up early that day and maybe saw something, please call our tip line, 360-299-1985. So, uh, so the good news as a community, I know we are all unified and unified in our commitment to restore the Tommy Thompson trestle as soon as possible. We have done this before and with all the positive energy, we'll do it again. In 2009, as many of you know, the trestle fire burned nearly 500 feet of the trestle. This time due to quick first response, just under 80 feet burned. Repair costs in 2009 were nearly $340,000. 290,000 of that came from individuals, service groups, folks like Chandler Square, Samish Nation, PSC, Seroponnis, the refineries, the schools. Many local businesses in the city contributed 50,000. We do not yet know how much the repair will be at this time around, but we, we have all the design work. And we will have a structural engineer on site this week for a detailed assessment. We received significant help in donations. We, we received significant help in donations of time and material and expertise from our local construction companies last time, and they've all reached out to us and offered that support again this time around. The Parks Foundation donation portal is live and accessible via the city's webpage. They're at 501C3, and they even took my credit card. The next council meeting, I will ask you all, council, for an emergency declaration resolution to waive competitive bidding. So we can quickly leverage our local expert to get this local treasure restored that sees well over 150,000 people use each year for recreation and for transportation. My staff is also coordinating with WashDOT to see what is possible for the safety enhancement for cyclists that will now have to ride on Highway 20, getting around this damaged trestle. So that's my update on the trestle at this time. And I guess one other update, Naval Air Station would be, I will have an open house on Saturday, the 17th, I believe, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So it's an opportunity either ask them to invite me to go back there to stay forever or see where I was working for many years. So that's that, and we are on to finance committee. Was there a finance committee meeting? Maybe that was, uh, there was not a finance committee. I apologize for that. Planning committee meeting, I know met earlier this evening.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes, you are correct. We just met at five o'clock and it was Councilmember Cleveland McGrath, myself and planning department staff, and we talked about our riparian management zones regulations that are almost finished on September 28th. The planning commission will discuss them. There will be a public hearing and then they will come to council. And our deadline is October 18th when they need to go to the growth management hearings board. So we're all looking forward to that being wrapped up. We talked a little bit about the motel at the top of commercial, the islands in there. Moving along through the permit process to turn the hotel rooms into small units, 36 of them. They are not, they will be market rate. They are not going to be income restricted, but we're hoping they will be more reasonably priced than large units. So those are coming along. And then we talked briefly about the housing action plan that city staff is working on with Makers Consulting and the existing conditions report is just about finished. So the planning committee will be meeting with makers after doing our homework and reading those things and bringing suggestions, ideas, comments forward, and then those things will come to council.
All right. Thank you. And there was no fiber committee meeting. Uh, any other announcements and committee reports that I needed to cover? Okay, we're on to public comment. This is the opportunity for any members of the public, and I see we've got a number of folks here and a couple of folks online. This is your opportunity to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. So we ask you to come up and to the microphone and state your name and where you live. And it can just be the city. Doesn't have to, we don't have to have your address and we usually give you three minutes. Any member of the public wish to address the council? And I'm looking for hands raised online. I've got one hand raised online, so I will need some technical assistance. Looks like Mr. Or Ron Lindsay.
Yes, hello.
Okay, I can hear you.
Oh, good. Thank you. Well, thank you for this opportunity to make a comment. I've contacted several of the council members recently, and I sent a letter that some of you may have seen about the jackhammer noise that we're experiencing here in our neighborhood. I'm sure this is not a new issue. I've heard the jackhammer noise in the distance before. And, uh, but it is truly disturbing. It's, it's been going on for over three weeks. From 7:30 in the morning to four or 4:30 in the afternoon, uh, most days of the week. And it, and it is really loud. Uh, you can't really hold a conversation outside. Uh, it is so loud. And I don't really know what the council can do. Uh, I don't know the noise ordinances. I did peruse the state, uh, ordinance, the state municipal code or code a little bit. And there's an exemption for construction, so that's not very helpful. But it does seem that, uh, one individual should not disrupt the peace and quiet of an entire neighborhood for weeks on end. And, uh, I'd appreciate it if the council could consider this issue and perhaps there's something that can be done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And we do have noise ordinances, but just received your correspondence today and we'll take a look at it and get back with you. Our staff get back. Thank you. All right. All right, we are going to move on to item five, which is our consent agenda. Items A and B, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
I move to approve items A and B on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougall, a second by Mr. Young to approve consent agenda items A and B. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are on to our public hearings. First one, six A ordinance 4030, an ordinance of the city of Anacortes, Washington, amending chapter 10.12 regarding stopping, standing, and parking. And I think Mr. Meesmer has the lead on this discussion and possible action item. Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience. See if I can bring up a map here real quick. Ordinance 4030, before you this evening proposes to amend AMC section 10.12.020 to add Fifth Street to the areas that do not allow a vehicle to be parked for a continuous period in excess of two hours. And I think as all the council members know, most of our downtown central business district area has a limited two-hour parking on the side streets and Commercial Avenue. And so this would be between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday of each week. And the request was made by a couple of different budding business owners. That request went to the Traffic Safety Committee, was reviewed, and Traffic Safety Committee has recommended that the council approve ordinance 4030 limiting parking on Fifth Street to a maximum of two hours between the days of Monday through Saturday. And if there's any questions, be happy to answer that. Very straightforward and.
Counsel or Traffic Safety Committee or council? Any questions, comments?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. We were all in very solid agreement about this because it brings into conformance Fifth Street with all the other streets downtown, and it seems like a reasonable, very reasonable request. So if there are no other comments, I move to approve.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Yes, thank you. No, I'm in total agreement. I think that these are issues that the city itself, as we work through all of the things that are in front of us and trying to make good choices for all of us. I know it's not an easy job at all, but I think this is a good move. I will say, however, it is a larger issue of parking that is before, that will come before this council. Some tweaking that may need to be done. I'm aware of residential communities that are also dealing with this same issue. And so there are some things that I think that need to come before council for us to have a comment about. I think that it sometimes can be disruptive. However, in this case, I think it's an excellent solution. And thank you very much for bringing it forward.
So I realized before we interrupted Ms. Moulton's, uh, motion that it's a public hearing and I need to offer members of the public an opportunity to comment if you're interested. Please come on up.
Good evening. My name is Vem Hooperman, Anacortes. I'm just, uh, curious on how this ordinance is going to be enforced.
So, uh, I can take that one. We have a, uh, parking, we, through our police department, we also have a parking enforcement officer, although it's shared half time with, uh, animal control. So how we enforce, uh, how we attempt to enforce all of our regulations and ordinances. All right, council, over to you, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Um, I move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick. Mr. Franciac, would you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're on to item seven, other business, seven A shoreline master program periodic update. Draft three for discussion, and this is a discussion item. And Ms. Grange, looks like you have the lead on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, so just a brief introduction, the city, as you know, is conducting the periodic review of its shoreline master program. The shoreline master program is required under the State Shoreline Management Act. And it is the document that has goals, policies, and regulations that guide development of the city's shorelines, along the marine shorelines and, and lakes as well. And the, uh, this update, excuse me, so the periodic update is basically looking at, um, what are the changes that have been made to various state laws and, um, guidance regarding shorelines and, and also comprehensive plan changes that the city has conducted, development regulation changes, looking at all of those things that have occurred over the past eight years and trying to harmonize everything so, so things are consistent. And this, this update also includes reorganization of the shoreline master program. So, um, currently it is a standalone document that one has to find on our website to look at what the policies and regulations are. The proposal is to relocate the goals and policies of the, of the master program into our comprehensive plan in a new shoreline element. And then also we migrate the development regulations, shoreline development regulations into our Anacortes Municipal Code, Title 19. So all of the regulations that cover development of property will be in the same place in the Anacortes Municipal Code. So based on, um, we've, we've discussed this at council a couple of times, a couple of months ago. And at the last meeting, council had requested that, um, the department create a third draft of the shoreline master program, um, regulations in AMC 1972 and bring that forward to council to make sure that we're all on the same page with what's in the document. If there are any additional changes that should be made before we put the document out for a final comment period. So that's, that's kind of what we're here to do this evening is to make sure we've got it all right in the, in the current document. Um, and we do have Alex Capron, just saw him pop up. Hi, Alex, and Dan Nickel from the Watershed Company, and they're, um, going to do a presentation on the third draft and, and talk about some public comments that we've received, recommended suggestions for how to address those. And then, uh, we'll go from there afterwards. If you've got questions or additional items that we need to bring up in the SMP, we can, we can talk about that. So for now, I will go ahead and introduce Alex Capron. Take it away, Alex.
All right. Thanks very much, Libby. Um, I'm gonna share my screen here.
All right, we can see it. Welcome, Alex. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. All right. Well, yeah, thanks very much for the introduction, Libby. Um, yeah, tonight we're discussing the third draft of, of the SMP, um, as far as the periodic, periodic update goes. And, uh, yeah, as Libby, oops, let's see here. I am not getting. There we go. I'll get like a third window. So yeah, here's kind of the snapshot history of the project to date. Yeah, it's been a multi-year effort, uh, starting with a series of, uh, in-person and virtual open house houses in 2019 and 2020 that introduced the project and project scope as well as a series of planning commission meetings. Yeah, joint ecology, city public hearing, um, followed by initial determination by Department of Ecology and their, and the planning commission review and recommendation to city councils. So our most recent two meetings, uh, yeah, in, in May have kind of brought us to this point. And, um, yeah, tonight we've got a couple of topics. Um, I will be focusing a lot on bullet three there. Uh, Lauren advising's, uh, comments, which can be found on page 187 of, uh, the council package tonight. And, um, yeah, we'll also be sharing a shoreline concept, and this was, yeah, an item that was, um, yeah, suggested by, uh, Mr. Meesmer to, to share with council. Yeah, so the comment response matrix, um, yeah, which is, yeah, found in the packet. I, I, I took snapshots of, um, basically the comment on the left-hand side here in, in the table and the city's response on the right-hand side. So I'm gonna go through each comment as efficiently as I can and just kind of walk through the rationale and, um, yeah, the response there. So the first, addressing sea level rise is part of this SMP periodic update. This is definitely something the city is on board with, and, um, it is something that the city has, um, yeah, already made some regulatory and policy changes, um, based upon earlier concepts. The, uh, the regulatory change has to do with shoreline stabilization. This, this was originally a recommended edit by the Skagitland Trust. It was a comment response matrix in April of, uh, 2022. Yeah, capturing this change. We will, uh, go into this detail a little bit more under comment, comment number 11 in this presentation. Uh, but it basically requires a, a higher burden of proof for the applicant. Yeah, to ensure that if a new structure or new parcel is created, that they consider sea level rise and redevelopment proposal.
Mayor Miller.
Looking at the policies.
Mr. Young. Oh, sorry, Mr. Young, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I was just going to indicate that Mr. Capron, you're fading in and out just a little bit, and I wanted to make sure I could hear you clearly. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll speak up. Uh, related to the policy changes of the SMP, these were again, um, captured in, uh, in April of 2022 in response to Skagitland Trust's, um, comments, uh, incorporating, um, yeah, sea level rise projections and monitoring potential effects on sea level rise. Uh, and, and that these changes would be captured in the restoration and adaptive management element within the shoreline element of the comprehensive plan. So these are new, uh, policies, um, that, that help address, uh, this, this public comment. Then moving on to vegetation conservation. So this is a comment number two in the response matrix. Yeah, the comment asks, uh, how the SMP is, is intending to protect adequate shoreline vegetation. And there's, there's a couple of standards at play, um, which, yeah, are kind of address a few of these, uh, comments that vegetation, vegetation conservation standards, they, um, they have a, a standard where you're focusing that vegetation along the shoreline and keeping that intact to the greatest extent possible. Also, um, regulating new structures so they're outside of a shoreline setback. So an example of this found here is in the shoreline conservancy designation, uh, where it's a hundred-foot setback. It's the entire designation shoreline. Uh, you can see in this photo, this ecology oblique photo, that that is a fully vegetated shoreline that, um, where new structures are prohibited. It cannot be constructed. So there's, there's multiple regulations and layers that apply, uh, in any new development proposal, not just the vegetation conservation.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Excuse me for interrupting, um, Mr. Capron, but I'm wondering if we could maybe do the thumbnails so that only the speaker is showing because some of the presentations being blocked to people at home, so we could, I think Ms. Grange is gonna fix that for us.
Here we go. Up, up, almost. Does that work? Okay.
I think that works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that better? Okay, great. All right. I think I covered, covered everything on this slide. Um, yeah, the third comment, uh, has to do with WDFW's, uh, riparian management zone guidance. And, um, yeah, it has to do with, and this is something Commissioner Moulton, um, yeah, mentioned earlier, having to do with a, a separate but related issue in critical areas, um, updates for the city. But, um, the, the riparian management zone, recommendations and guidance, um, they're, they're not necessarily regulatory mandates, uh, more guidance to consider and that the ecological functions of shoreline buffers, uh, were considered, in addition to existing and future land uses in the SMP comprehensive update. But otherwise, this guidance isn't really part of this periodic update, um, process. So it wasn't, it wasn't included, um, at the beginning of this project and under that, that consideration. But there are, however, strains to, uh, to strengthen the existing shoreline vegetation conservation standards as well as existing measures established as part of the comprehensive update. So as I alluded to, the, the structure setbacks and also minimizing development expansions in shoreline jurisdiction. Yeah, and clearing as well to the minimum necessary, uh, needed for the intended development. Uh, so yeah, as a result, there, there is no change based upon comment number three. Moving to comment number four, uh, the commenter, um, asks, uh, why the SMP allows clearing up to 15 feet within the ordinary high water mark. Again, uh, shoreline setbacks actually restrict that, um, quite a bit more depending on, uh, the use, upland use. If it is not water dependent, a lot of the shoreline residential, um, and conservancy, uh, split shoreline environment designation restricts development quite a bit, um, setback, uh, from, from ordinary high water. It also requires that native vegetation staying intact in nearly all possible circumstances. And to continue, so this is, uh, it is a, a long comment, but, uh, the, uh, the commenter also, uh, makes, makes comments on, um, on, on public access along the shoreline. And, um, there are, you know, only, only when there is a state compelling interest, uh, along the shoreline, the, for public access of, of the shoreline, would it support, um, clearing of, of, uh, vegetation adjacent to the shoreline? So if there is a, a state compelled interest, as supported by the WAC, that is, uh, yeah, WAC 173 dash 26, uh, 26 dash, uh, 176, um, as well as the shoreline policies there listed, the public access as well as economic development policies of the SMP for water oriented uses. And then for, um, yeah, again, with the vegetation conservation concept, mitigation needs to be focused along the water's edge. And if a site is degraded, meaning that it doesn't have, it, it doesn't have sufficient vegetation, sufficient existing vegetation, that's 15% of the total site must be replanted with native vegetation. So that also needs to be focused along the water's edge, uh, to the greatest extent practical, uh, practical, you know, as demonstrated by the applicant.
Alex, you're breaking up a little bit at the end there. Uh, just make, make sure to get closer to the microphone, I think.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Then looking at comments, uh, five through seven, uh, the comment related to tree trimming and tree trimming standards. So this is a new SMP amendment, uh, the commenter is, is critiquing. Uh, so every time an applicant comes in with a clearing and grading permit or tree trimming, it's, it's based upon that original permit. So you can't continuously submit a tree trimming permit and essentially trim your tree up completely. So no limbs are left. That an applicant needs to demonstrate that the, uh, the tree trimming activities for view preservation, not for additional view creation. Also, um, yeah, regarding, uh, number six and, uh, on a non-conforming site and any expansions there. Yeah, any, any legal non-conforming use, uh, can't, cannot expand or, or increase its use, uh, without conforming to the SMP. So if, if there were redevelopment of a non-conforming site, it could be allowed potentially within the existing building footprint. But the shoreline would need to be enhanced again if it's degraded. Yeah, and then. Um, yeah, and then for number seven, the impervious surface maximums, um, yeah, they, so the, the, uh, commenter is, is questioning how, what, what is the intended development? Could it be the entire parcel? Well, no, there's, there are in fact other regulations like impervious surface maximums in shoreline jurisdiction that that place a limit on how much development can occur um, in shoreline jurisdiction. Again, the, uh, upland shoreline residential, uh, that's upland from the conservancy designation, there is a, a cap. Uh, a percentage cap within shoreline jurisdiction that allows up to an impervious surface threshold. Um, yeah, that's, that's set by the S M P. And so that, that acts as a mechanism to essentially minimize development in shoreline jurisdiction. And looking at, uh, comments eight and nine, comment eight, um, in terms of repeatedly submitting development applications so that the site may be cleared. Um, there is a, a mechanism, a notice on title that essentially preserves that mitigation area and prevents development on that area in perpetuity. That that title runs with the land and prevents, um, further development of that area. And also restricts using that area for future mitigation. That area is set aside for mitigation for one development project. And that future development will have to set aside different areas. And so that, that addresses, yeah, comment eight. Terms of nine, um, yeah, so the, the commenter questions the size of a mitigation area and, and replanting along the shoreline. So uh, the S M P does recognize, uh, view corridors and that if there need to be, um, elements of mitigation that are separated along the shoreline, be it, you know, a ten by ten square, a hundred square foot mitigation area. So long as it's close to the, the water's edge where that mitigation is most valuable. That's, that's the, uh, the end goal. Then, uh, so comment ten moves to, uh, yeah, dock and buoy shading of seagrass and kelp and other critical saltwater habitat. So the commenter is, is, uh, questions where the, where the regulations are to protect these, um, these features and they actually exist in a in a, a separate spot in the S M P. That's A M C nineteen dot seventy-two dot four thirty-five. And, uh, no change essentially is needed because the critical saltwater habitat regulations already, already address this issue. Uh, in terms of preventing development in these areas. And then if, if it is a water-dependent use or if it is a statewide, um, a, a statewide interest over a local interest, um, that, that is a circumstance where development could potentially encroach within a buffer of a, a, a critical saltwater habitat area or, or encroach over that area. Um, but it has a very rigorous, um, set of standards um, for, for meeting that criteria. And that if, if the development were to meet standards A, A through C, um, D, they would need to provide mitigation that's equal to or better, um, ecological function. That is what they're, that, and is there currently. Um, yeah, moving, uh, on to comment eleven. So this has to do with shoreline stabilization. Uh, there are suggested edits to both, uh, policies and regulations made by the commenter and, um, yeah, so these suggested edits, uh, may result in a full taking of one or more properties by preventing new development on this property. If, if a applicant is not able to provide structural, uh, stabilization along their property, if they don't need, uh, if, if they walk through the code criteria, then that may result in a full taking, which would potentially create a liability for the city and is in conflict with the state constitution. The G M A, that's listed in the city's response. And yeah, continuing on with the, the shoreline stabilization comment. Um, yeah, so this looks at redlining, um, yeah, development reg- regulations allowing an applicant's licensed professional or, or qualified professional to demonstrate that, um, you know, an applicant must, you know, under the current S M P, they must demonstrate that bioengineering and soft structural techniques are infeasible. Um, and the commenter is, is requesting that, that, that code flexibility be removed. Um, and, and that, you know, the current S M P also also requires the applicant demonstrate that in any, any new, uh, shoreline stabilization, they also need to demonstrate that feeder bluffs and foragefish, um, spawning habitat areas are not impacted by that. That shoreline stabilization, um, that's proposed. So they need to demonstrate a soft shore technique isn't feasible and that there's, and that if it isn't feasible, that there's no impact to um, adjacent or nearby critical. And then finally, that there's no net losses of shoreline function. So the city, um, believes that there's no change, uh, you know, necessary or recommended at, at this point. Okay, and then, um, yeah, so comments, uh, twelve and thirteen, and this is, you know, rounding out the, the end of the comment response matrix. Uh, so no net loss, um, yeah, um, no net loss monitoring having to do with that, uh, the city recently was awarded a grant by, uh, Department of Ecology to uh, set up a more robust, uh, permit tracking system that will help better track, uh, no net loss. Um, and while this is, this is, you know, a great opportunity for the city to, to enhance their existing system. Um, you know, it isn't required as part of this periodic update to document a known net loss of shoreline ecological function. So there won't be a change at this time, uh, according, you know, according to the requirements of, of ecology. Um, however, the, uh, no net loss definition may be amended. Um, the, the, the current, the current definition, um, of known at loss um, is, uh, is currently a, a known at loss of ecological function shall be measured based on the data submitted with the shoreline application and C P O checklist applicable. So this, this current definition in the S M P doesn't reference the adoption date. And it, you know, therefore leaves it a little bit ambiguous when known at loss, um, should be tracked from. And so, you know, the city has a, uh, possible alternative definition. It's not currently in the code yet. Um, this may be a good opportunity to, to receive any council, um, feedback on this, um, updated definition, but the um, updated definition would include the adoption date of the S M P and the date of the, uh, uh, S M P inventory and characterization report, which creates that snapshot of, uh, of the ecological functions at, at play, um, during adoption. So with that, we move on to, um, you know, Canary case study. So we helped prepare, and this was, um, I guess to back up a little bit. Um, so in the last council meeting, either the, uh, May twenty-third or May sixteenth meeting, there was a, there was a discussion on showing a scenario of, you know, what it would, you know, what a plausible or, or possible development scenario would look like uh, down at the Sebastian Stewart, you know? Um, and I also have a PDF of this open. And that, you know, would, would allow me to, to zoom in if, if that's necessary. Um, but I, I do really want to hit home that this is for illustrative purposes only. This is not an engineer drawing. Uh, it, it has not been, um, vetted in, in any great amount of detail by, uh, by city staff. Um, but this takes a look at a couple of different, um, uses, a kayak rental, a seafood retail, uh, restaurant and, um, a total of twenty-one parking stalls up, up against, um, the hillside and a uh, an existing, you know, twenty, twenty-six foot, uh, roadway width that, that allows for two-way traffic. And, and, uh, and it's future extension of the Guanis, uh, from this channel trail. Um, yeah, and so, you know, with that, that's, that's a concept. Um, you know, my apologies, we weren't able to get this, uh, together in time for the council packet. Um, but, yeah, do offer this to, to council just to get a visual of, of what a potential development concept could look like. Um, yeah, so with, with that, um, yeah, we stand here today, um, you know, discussing the third draft. I was, I spent virtually all the, all my time, you know, looking at the comment response matrix. Um, you know, discussing that tonight. Um, but yeah, moving forward, the, the three final steps to this, a, a public comment period and with that point, uh, the public hearing with city council and hopefully, uh, S M P adoption in the future. So, that is it.
Mayor Miller. Um, Mr. Young.
Thank you. Um, two questions. One probably can wait until Ms. Grange is finished, but just to make sure I'm following. Um, I know that that last slide that you were showing, that he was showing, Mr. Cape Run was showing, uh, indicating that he wanted to hold on to that. I was just trying to make sure I was following exactly where that was. And if you could tell me, and it was some wording across the top. It said Canary at the top. And I know we had several on the shoreline in, in accordance. So I was just trying to mentally gauge where that was. And if you could tell me on that, that would be great.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Um, great, great question. Yeah, this is, um, actually formerly the Sebastian Stewart Canary, um, had a couple of different names, but it's down at the, um, the access to it is off of Eleventh Street at approximately, I think it's B Avenue goes down, uh, to the shoreline. Does that help?
Yeah, that's, that's helpful. That's not the big red one.
The big, I, I should have said that.
I'm by color. Coordinating. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
And the last question, I'll, I'll just go ahead and put it out. That of that presentation that Mr. Cape Run just presented to us would be helpful to me to view as I'm continuing to review this and the things going forward. So as much of that, that he can share with us, it was helpful because it was succinct. It pointed out different things in the arguments, you know, that, or, uh, comments that people may have made and it, um, presented a succinct um, explanation for why we're making the choices we are. And I want to be able to review those as well.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Young. I, I absolutely, um, do have that presentation and we'll get it on to, uh, the website as soon as possible after tonight's meeting.
So if I understand, then this, the, this is the opportunity for council to, if there's any, uh, changes, modifications you want to put in this draft. Because obviously it's going to go back out after council has a chance to say, okay, that we'd like to see this, uh, this change or otherwise, then it's going to go back to public comment. And by the way, I appreciate you, uh, putting the big disclaimer. Anytime we have conceptual designs of anything along the trail, it generates lots of excitement. So, uh, uh, yes, that's, uh, non-vetted, uh, conceptual drawing to try to show what the, uh, shore, uh, shoreline master program can can possibly work towards. So council. Ms. Molton, and then I think Mr. McDougall.
Thank you. Um, we talked about this a little bit at the planning committee meeting, Ms. Grage, but I would like to say what a good job staff has done in putting all of this together and the clarity of it and bringing this forward into the comp plan and the, and Title Nineteen. So everything's in one place. I know it represents a ton of work and it's a lot, but I think it's, it's really well done. Thanks.
Mr. McDougall, thank you, Mayor. Um, I had sent a question to Ms. Grage, uh, over the weekend regarding, uh, like the track, tracking and performance monitoring reports. And so thank you very much for the answer. And I was just gonna, uh, I basically kind of read out some of it. So I had asked, you know, essentially how long that, uh, the tracking and performance monitoring is supposed to, uh, to go. And it's basically specified up to five years, paid for by the applicant. And the reports go to us as well as the, um, uh, state of Washington. All, all correct?
That is correct. The, um, the proposed mitigation reports do go to all of the reviewing agents, the resource agencies for review and comment before approval. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And we're hoping on our end that wonderful project called Smart Gov is going to help us, uh, track some of that stuff. So we, we have our fingers crossed. It's, it's, it's working pretty well so far.
We do, and I'm sorry, Ms.
Yeah, no, it's, and, uh, and then so the public comment window will be open for how long?
Thank you. Yes. Um, so if there are not any, um, changes from, from council that you would like to see incorporated into this draft, um, then we would be able to get that out relatively quickly. Um, we would do an advertisement in the paper um, for next, next Wednesday, I think would be the, the, when the advertisement would come out and we would look at doing a comment period until uh, from September twenty-first to October twelfth is what we would look at. That's twenty-one days. Um, and all of the information would be available to the public on the, on the website. Um, the one change that I did want to mention that Alex brought up was the, um, no net loss definition. And staff does recommend, um, adding that change. And so if, if council is, is okay with that, we would, we would make that change.
So yeah, I'm, I'm seeing a bunch of head nods, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Ms. Cleveland.
Yep, I just want to say thank you to the planning department, um, and, uh, all the folks, the Kins Watershed. Like, this has been a ton of work. And the fact that it's come back again and we don't have a lot of comment is actually a good thing. Um, so I'm happy that all of this, getting this third draft out was, was a big deal. And so um, makes it a lot easier for the public to comment. So thank you for your thorough, uh, rehash for, thank you, Alex. Um, but I'm, I'm pleased with it and I'm pleased to hear the no net loss being added.
All right. Well, we'll see, uh, we'll see it again soon. Thank you.
Can't wait. Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to item seven B. Uh, under other business, R Avenue Long Term Improvements Project, National Highways Freight Program Grant Acceptance. And this is a discussion item with possible action, although I believe there's probably a timeline on our grant, uh, request. Mr. Hash, you are on.
Good evening, Mayor Castle, Henry Hash Public Works. Delighted to be here before you tonight because this is really an exciting time. This is a project that we have been working on it for many, many years. Uh, we are getting ready to get moving. So I'll just give you a little bit of a background. Mr. Tim Holman, our pro- uh, engineering manager, has done an excellent job in his presentation for reasoning and rationale for the location. Uh, so as you know, this project has been, worked for many years. We received the grant for approximately three point four eight million dollars. The way he only wears ties when the projects are over three million. Um, from the National Highway Freight Program, N H F P. This is for construction of the roundabout, the R and thirtieth. The reason we are saying thirtieth, they were options, but thirtieth is the one that had the highest scoring. And the grant was given for this location for good reasons that Mr. Holman will explain pretty shortly. Uh, there is a match of thirteen and a half percent or five hundred fifty thousand dollars that's matched uh, from the city. However, we have applied for a grant of five hundred fifty thousand dollars from T I V, and we are very hoping to receive that. If we don't receive that this year, we'll continue applying it next year and we may get it just on time. That's our hope. So we have actually met with several people because we have so many states. So we have actually met with several people because we have so many stakeholders in here. We have met the Public Works Committee, Mayor Miller, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Director of Community Development, Finance Director, and have, yeah, and I have presentation to several others. We have also met with some of the property owners as well to make sure they're in the loop. And we believe they're all in support of this and they're all in agreement. So we're very, very pleased for this. If all goes as planned, we are going to construct it next year. So, but that I'll ask Mr. Holman to give his great presentation for the reasoning.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Hash. Uh, thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council, uh, members of the public. I'm Tim Holman, Engineering Services Manager with the Public Works Department. And I'm going to bring up my map, actually. Bear with me. So as you all well know, the, the twenty sixteen comp plan, uh, looks at both sides of our avenue as, as great opportunities for, uh, future development. The, the area to the west of our avenue is slated for high, high density residential. And the area to the east of our avenue is slated for, uh, more commercial industrial, uh, growth. And so our avenue runs right down the middle and also as a part of, of that, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, it identifies three, uh, intersections along this corridor that are slated for, uh, to, to have a failing tran, tra, uh, traffic grade in the twenty-year, um, planning period. And so, uh, this project is a mobility project and it looks to, uh, fix those three failing intersections with one improvement. The aspects of this project that, that helped to do that is, is around about at thirtieth street and our avenue, but also, uh, closing off the center or the crossing and left turns at twenty-eighth street and thirty-fourth street. Getting rid of those crossing movements and left turn movements allow those, uh, level of service for those intersections to come back into compliance with our, uh, transportation planning. The reason for, for around about thirtieth street is that it provides a great access to, to both neighborhoods, both west and east of our avenue. Placement at one of the other intersections that was considered, uh, would result in, in less, less access, especially to the area to the east of our avenue. And then one other aspect that I wanted to, to make sure that was brought before you and, and the public's aware of, made aware of is that, is that the left turn at thirty-second street is, is a, remains as part of this project. So, you know, the Public Works Department acknowledges that's a very important turn movement, uh, to reach the rest of town as well as the ferries. And so that remains as a part of this project. So those, that's a brief overview. Now I'll, I'll open it to questions for anyone.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. Um, the Public Works Committee, um, met about this and we had a fantastic discussion, uh, with Mr. Hash. Of course, um, Mr. Holman and of course Will, Mr. Ludeman, as well as others. And we went over in detail why the choice was made at thirtieth street and how effective it would be for, um, curbing and addressing the issues such that you have intermodal activity that could happen. And then it would give accessibility to other parts of the city. And the questions did come up about why some of the other in, uh, intersections would be less effective for the good of the city. And, um, and again, it really was a wonderful presentation and I'm happy with this. And I also want to thank you, um, Mr. Holman for, uh, you know, one slide presentation, which is fantastic. But I also want to thank Mr. Hash in this whole process of bringing this forward and arguing or presenting the reasons and the rationale behind and why this particular thing is so important and how we as a city benefit. And so I just thought it was just a fantastic job. And I wanted to commend you and the department just for bringing it forward the way you have and coming up with solutions that really I think will benefit the city.
Thank you for that. Yeah, no, I, I appreciate those words because I know when this first came before council several months ago or last year, there was a bit of skepticism from not only the council, which I was on it at the time, and from a number of our constituents. And again, I appreciate the work of staff and again, uh, hopefully council. Any other questions, Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holman. Can you remind us where the pedestrian crossings are currently on our avenue?
Yeah. So there's currently a pedestrian crossing at approximately twenty-third street, approximately twenty-ninth street and approximately thirty-third street.
So those all have the flashing lights where you press the button?
That's, that's exactly right.
Okay. So obviously pedestrians and then people on bicycles dismount, press the button, walk across with their bikes and then reason they ride.
Yep, that's exactly right.
So twenty-third, twenty-ninth, thirty-third-ish, all in those areas. So there are three opportunities between twenty-second and thirty-fourth to cross safely.
That's exactly right. And then, and then the roundabout at thirtieth will also have full pedestrian facilities and, and provide an additional crossing.
Great. And, and bicycles being vehicles can also ride through the roundabout themselves.
That's exactly right. They can, they can ride or dismount as they feel comfortable.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Ms. Cleveland?
Sure. Um, thank you. And, and I appreciate the fact that we were, I'm not on, um, Public Works, but I appreciate the call and being able to kind of talk about it ahead of time. But could you, we, we talked about a little bit, um, you know, this is one phase and this is really focused on moving freight. And that's fantastic because this is an important area and our avenue is really supposed to be focused on that. But can you expand out and talk a little bit about how, um, in addition to this specific grant, what we're doing to kind of connect between commercial and our avenue, both pedestrians and bicyclists? And is there, what is, what's in the works for that?
Yeah, that's great. That's a great question. So yes, we're, uh, we're never, never at rest in the Public Works Department. So, um, this project's tied, entitled the R Avenue Long Term Improvements Project. So we're trying to look at that corridor and these areas as a whole. Um, so we have a couple of other things in the works, uh, one of which is directly on our avenue. There's another grant we have that's being moved forward from, uh, twenty-seven to twenty-three to kind of align with this, that's going to give us the opportunity to do some pedestrian improvements along the, uh, west side of our avenue, some wider, wider sidewalks, some multimodal paths. And then maybe even look at re, uh, look at where to best place those crossings that Ms. Moulton was, was mentioning earlier. Just if there's any opportunities to better align those. Also, we're looking at, uh, we have another grant, uh, in, in, that we've applied for through Wash Dot Bike and Ped Program, uh, that looks to connect, uh, twenty-ninth street and, and then upgrade Q Avenue and then thirtieth into, um, into the roundabout. And that's going to provide pedestrian facilities as well as bike facilities to connect to the existing bike route on twenty-ninth street as, as well as, uh, provide a better crossing that's been requested multiple times, uh, at twenty-ninth and commercial. So that, we haven't, we haven't won that grant yet. I hope to be back asking you to accept that grant soon.
Anything else?
Yeah. No, I just want to say thank you. I think it's good that the folks out in the public know that this is just one phase of multiple phases when it comes to improving this area of town because it's really where a lot of our density is going to go in the next ten, twenty years. And so we need to make that livable. Um, so thank you. This is the first step. So I appreciate it.
And then we hope very much to get a matching grant because just a reminder that council, it does come with, uh, you know, it's sort of, no, there's no such thing as free money, but it is a federal grant passed through to the state, but we have to provide a match upwards of a half a million dollars out of our own funds. But I know that, uh, the, our staff is working very hard to, uh, to come up with a match for that as well. So. Ms. Moulton.
Um, if there are no further comments, I move to authorize the mayor to sign agreements with Wash Dot, accepting the NHFP grant for the R Avenue Long Term Improvement Project.
Second. Hey, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young. Mr. Franciac, would you call for the vote, please?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much for the work. Appreciate it. Uh, with no further business before the council, I'll adjourn the, oh, Mr. Young, please.
Yes. No, I, I, I appreciate it. And just one final thing, I wanted to commend once again the, um, team at the city and the public work staff for the, um, day of being able to drop the trash off down at, uh, at the facility. And personally, I went down with a bunch of old chairs, you know, that was marginalized. And I went down and had them in a truck and, you know, the guys were there that were efficient. And quite honestly, they helped you take them off the truck and they were moving quickly and efficiently. And it was a wonderful operation. So I wanted to say thank you for providing that service. A lot of people like myself really appreciated it and just really, thank you.
I, I appreciate you interrupting the adjournment of the meeting because that was very important. I forgot to mention that early on. And it was a very efficient, uh, process and, uh, it was great and got a lot of positive feedback from the, uh, community. So with that, I will adjourn the city council meeting. Thank you.